Hey, welcome to the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Trustees Meeting in Perry Township. This time I will call the meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Winn, at this time, I'd like to know if we could take a moment of silence and for our thirteen soldiers that we lost.
Thank you.
And I got one more.
Okay.
And we just, I want to send our condolences to Jerry Peters on the loss of his wife Lynn and Cindy Milligan on the loss of her husband Lambert Times.
Ms. Girl, will you call the roll?
Trustee Winn?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for the acceptance of the revised meeting minutes for July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the regular trustees' meeting of August tenth. And by consent agenda, we'll also approve the bills for August first of two thousand and twenty-one through August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one, which include electronic warrants, one fifty-nine, twenty, twenty-one through, sorry, one eighty-eight, two thousand and twenty-one, and check numbers thirty-six, four thirty-six through thirty-six, five ten.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Winn?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes. Okay, fiscal officer report, please.
Since last meeting, we have submitted the application for the American Rescue Plan Act, the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds for Ohio non-entitlement units of local government. The application was submitted on August thirtieth. We received approval on August thirty-first and were notified we should receive the funds of one hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-one cents within the next ten to fifteen business days. As of today, we have not received those funds yet. We also have Resolution twenty-one fifty-eight. This came from the Auditor's Office. It has to do with the amounts and rates that were determined and set by the Budget Commission. And with the acceptance of this resolution, they accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies to certify them to the county auditor as written. If I could have somebody do a resolution for that so we can get that signed off and back to them by their November first deadline.
Sweet. You want to make us to make a motion to accept that resolution?
Yes, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Winn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Please sign this.
We're here to talk to an officer.
I don't think they're here right now.
Oh, really? They're sitting four o'clock on.
They may potentially be out on call. You'll need to run by and knock on their door.
Sorry, shut this thing down.
You're welcome to join us.
That might not be a bad idea. I live in this township.
Oh, there you go. You're welcome. Yeah, let's go.
The next topic is payment of the InTrust IT invoice. This was for the system, the video conferencing equipment and professional services. We received the invoice came in at five thousand, twenty-five dollars. I need approval to pay the bill and know how we're going to split the cost of it.
Had there been any previous discussions with the other departments of how we were dividing this up? Or what funds we were dividing this up with?
We did talk about splitting it across the funds. We didn't get into specific details of how we were going to split it. I think there was a notional suggestion made initially.
When does that have to be decided on? Is that, is there a sense of urgency to that?
That bill, we've had, I believe, thirty-day terms.
And they're not done with the install either.
Right.
We're still good in that regard.
Yeah, we still have some, have some leftover room with that.
Let's table making a decision on that right now and check the budgets of the various departments and see who can split what. And what percentage each department will be using of that service, because I know that includes the web hosting, yes, or?
No.
No, the Wi-Fi. Just the meeting room.
So the cameras, the speakers, the microphones.
Okay, the police department's going to be using that for interrogations, though, right? The recording capabilities?
They haven't said anything. They could.
Well, since we should probably find out how much each one will, like Caleb's not going to use it, so, yeah. We should find out how much each one will use it and what percentage should come out of each fund before we just arbitrarily pay it.
And then also with the Montgomery County Township Association, I attended their August twenty-third meeting via Zoom. They've also planned the holiday dinner for Wednesday, November seventeenth, which I will also be attending. And then outside of that, I also reviewed a webinar from Balancing Act with regards to the ARPA tools. Talks about, you know, how to effectively use the funds and monitor them and record-keeping and all of that stuff with them.
Okay, awesome.
And that's it.
So as far as the ARP funds, we're up to date with everybody else as far, I mean, if any trainings between the two of you, we've got a good grasp on that. Okay. Thank you. Caleb Broden Cemetery Report?
Cemeteries, we sold three lots this month in Pleasant Hill, that makes fourteen for this year. We just recently buried two at Pleasant Hill, that makes seventeen for the year. We've had several de-transfers. Karen's taking care of those. We pulled a bunch of bushes from Pleasant Hill and cut some bushes at Eversall. We placed four yards of dirt in low spots and holes at Pleasant Hill. Also have lawn plus coming in sometime this month to spray broadleaf this fall. We're going to be running a stump grinder for a week, roughly three to five days, depending on how many we can get done. We're going to start at Pleasant Hill and then work to Eversall. That's a cost of a thousand, fifty for the week, but it could be less depending on how quickly we move through that. We just, I just started getting our foundations together for billing and talked to the concrete. We're going to try to chew for that for the first week of October. We spent hour, several hours digging up markers, trying to locate our sections. Need to look into getting section sign made. I don't know exactly who to contact. I've done some research on, on the internet to try to find different signs, but what I found the best price was like thirty-two dollars a sign. It's like a six-by-eight sign. So if you guys think of any other ideas, but just, just started looking into that. I called and talked to Wal at the county.
Yeah.
And he was supposed to talk to the sign guy, so I haven't heard back. That was, that was yesterday afternoon, but.
Probably check with other townships and see what they do also and where they get theirs, because.
Yeah, we were going to take it, drive up to Clay Township and just sit down with Chris and go over that and see what he does, where his best options are too.
Cemetery and list works pretty good about that, too, Rose Lawn. They just have little signs that says, you know, one, and then says two, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then on top of that, it's like our cemetery records. Just try to see if we can simplify those a little bit, at least bring them up to current, because there's, you know, looking through four different books. Two that have, I don't know if they've had mites get into them or mice or whatever and they're missing pieces. So I don't know if it's something that we can just go over. Missy and I have talked about doing it, just haven't got there yet. But you were talking about doing a web service. Is that something?
Well, I was, I was going to work on digitizing them, so doing manual data entry, trying to convert what we can. Anything that we can't figure out, put that off to the side and we'll, we'll figure those out independently. And once I have that actually like in a spreadsheet format, then we can leverage a web service or something else and get that incorporated on the new website.
Yeah, so just, you know, Karen and I spent a bunch of time just looking for it. And then once you have somebody call, then you got to go through the book. And if it's not even in the book, go see if they have a deed. Then they don't have a deed, and it's just a, just a bunch of things that need to be put together to make it easier on everybody.
Right.
Roads, we just finished putting new bearings and putting new cutters and new bolts on the roadside mower. We just put in a twelve-inch drive pipe and reshaped the ditch on Air Hill. Another twelve-inch pipe going in for a farm entrance on Amity. Road mower will be going out next week for its third round. We will probably do a fourth round and finish up after the crops and everything come off. We can get everything cleaned up all the way around. We are currently rebuilding a landscape trailer we got from the police department. We've been mowing and weed eating our cemeteries and properties. I've also been looking into getting a new tank for our used oil situation, which we burn and heat with. Double wall, five-hundred-gallon tank right now is right around thirty-five-hundred bucks. We currently have a five-hundred-gallon tote that we go and get the oil now, and then we have five fifty-five-gallon drums sitting around. It just takes up a lot of space. And I'm always constantly having to move stuff around, jockey it around, and I'm sure at some point there will be an accident if we have oil.
That would be bad.
So it's just something that I would like to look into it. I don't know that we couldn't get away with just a single wall tank as long as we have barriers around it, but a double wall is thirty-five-hundred bucks, so. Still shopping for that, trying to find our best solution to house all that. Talking to the clean burn guy, he was thinking probably a thousand gallons total would get us through the whole year. And then, you know, we don't have guys calling and say, hey, can you come get it? And we're, we're sitting full and I can't go get it anyway, so.
Right.
Just trying to eliminate that, too. We did bid on a dump truck. We did not get the dump truck. It went for fifty-eight thousand, so it was a really nice dump truck, but didn't get it, so still currently looking for that as well. That's it.
Is our dump truck running?
It is. It's running. Everything's good. The, we're going to take the yellow truck and let Steve look over it and get it up to par. The transmission still was supposed to be delivered on the tenth, and it's still not here. So we're waiting on that, but we have to use it this week anyway, so.
Okay. I meant to ask you, were you able to get those headstones fixed at that cemetery up on Air Hill?
I've not got them fixed yet.
Okay.
I talked to Dwayne at Abbotsville.
Okay.
And he wants to come down and look at them, and then he would advise me on what the best approach. He said he has several different buckets that there's no sense in us buying anything. He could just allow us to have.
They're starting, if they're starting to fall over on their own, it might be best just to walk through there and make note of the ones that will potentially need some attention pretty soon and see what we need to do as far as upkeep of them.
Talked to Michelle, was her name, and then her husband, I can't think of her husband's name, I wrote it down, but they do that. They do headstone restoration.
Okay.
And she called him to get information on that, but she was looking for foundation prices and all that. But she was supposed to give me all that information to help me with that. And she said, if you just want a, a quick run-through on how to do that kind of thing, she said they, they would be happy to come over and do that. I said, I would love to do that, but just getting it set up and when, you know, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have a report from the police department?
Yes, I have it. Chief Littleton and Sergeant has both that training, so. Let's see, had a great turnout for the fishing derby. Thank you to everyone who made the event possible. All the stats are posted on the website. Our next community event is Shop With A Cop. It will be held in December date still to be, to be determined. He has a new hire, so I need a motion for this, for an officer, Erica Margie. Part-time, it's sixteen dollars per hour, date of hire nine, seven, twenty-one, so I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to make that higher as red.
I'll second. And that's all he has.
Trustee Winn?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Zoning to first, your report, please.
As of today, we've had, we have a hundred and eighty-six residents that have not paid their third-quarter trash bill. There were eighty-two delinquent trash accounts that were sent to the Auditor's Office on Wednesday, September the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. I will be sending out the fourth-quarter trash bills September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. I will be sending the third-quarter request to be invoiced statement to Vicki Atkins at Rumkey on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Zoning, we have in the, since the last Board of Trustee meeting, we've, I have issued ten permits. I have five pending. Two barns, one single home, one home addition, and one above ground pool. And I am scheduling two nuisance abatement hearing and getting ready for them to come before the Board of Trustees in October. And that's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to trustee reports. I have been bouncing around to a bunch of different meetings. I'm hoping that this would be in the police reporter, Chief Littleton or Sergeant Hesse would be here. We had a really good meeting with some representatives from Regional Dispatch to discuss some of their services, what benefits are available to our officers through them. And they heard from our last meeting what our concerns were, and they were more than willing to address them and look into things. So, but I think that had a very positive outcome at the end of that meeting and sparked a lot of revisiting things and rethinking of things that I leave to Chief Littleton to do. September twenty-seventh, I'm going to be attending the Law Enforcement Officers Memorial with other leaders and dignitaries from the surrounding cities and communities. And then September twenty-ninth, there's a tornado recovery open house at Madison Lakes for anyone who is involved in the tornado recovery efforts. I plan to attend that, would encourage anyone who's volunteered for cleanup, anybody who gave out clothing, supply handouts, those who helped at Perry B. Dale, you were instrumental in all that. You would be included, both Dales, actually. You know, anyone who's interested in attending that, I'll have the details on my trustee Facebook page sometime later this week, or you can feel free to contact me with, to get them. And September is National Disaster Awareness Safety Month, so I've been putting little how-to-do-things tips and things from either NOAA or FEMA or the Emergency Management Services about things like safety kits for your car, safety kits for your home, disaster planning, what to do just in case. We've all been through it, but I don't exactly have a new plan based on it, and I don't know how many families do, so that information is there for whomever's benefit. And that's pretty much what I've got. Oh, no, there is another. I attended a couple meetings and I've been in touch with the folks from the retreat program, and there are some changes to the program. And I think I put that, I don't know where I wrote it, so I'm a little discombobulated, but they are changing the date of their tree planting. It is not going to be in September. They are choosing one or two houses in the Brookville area to get them started. And then they will be having a larger workday and a dinner gathering sometime at a date to be announced, and I will get more information from James Metz as that goes on. And I will, as soon as we know the addresses of the two homes in Brookville or the township, they asked me to suggest a couple. And I asked for some volunteers from the township and got a very decent response, people who said I'd like to go first or people who said I'd be willing to wait. So thank you to whoever and everybody who responded. But we should have more information on that, hopefully before October, but I'm not sure. As the information comes in, I will pass that on.
So if you provide me copies of the information for the tornado cleanup meet and greet, as well as for the retreat, I'll update what's on the website and the Facebook.
Yep. I'm going to email that to you or send it to Karen. Karen can send it to you.
Okay.
That's all I had. Your turn.
Yep. So this month, I've continued working on the, the website, social media, and digitizing documentation as, as required. Apparently working an issue with our tax-exempt status with Zoom. We initially submitted them paperwork and somehow it wasn't attached to our purchase. We had to go in after the fact and submit that, so that's being reviewed when it comes out of their process. That'll be redacted, the taxable cost on there. We did get the Office 365 purchased for the lobby PC. It's been set up. It's currently archiving trustee emails so that they don't have to worry about it on their personal devices. You'll, you'll still be able to access through your IMAP connection, but then your older emails will pull there instead of leaving them on the server.
You'll have to show me how to do that, because I was looking for something this morning that I couldn't find.
Right. I can do that. The meeting room audiovisual update. So right now, we have a, a number of brackets for mounting the camera, the speakers, the control device, and two microphones that are on back order. Due to COVID, a lot of IT hardware is on back order, regardless of where you get it from. Once those are done, they'll coordinate with Karen on coming in and getting those, getting this completely set up. After talking with InTrust about managing this, you know, being able to have a system connected. Initially, we talked about using the lobby PC on a cart. That's not going to work. That PC's too old. It wouldn't support what we needed to support. So I told them not to worry about adding anything to the current work. I've instead started looking at refurbished micro PCs for use here in this room. And right now, a micro PC with a twenty-two-inch monitor. We are getting a wireless mouse and keyboard from InTrust as part of their install, so we don't need that. But we do need a, a set of cables as well. And I can, I can get that from New Egg Business refurbished for under six hundred dollars. I'm not going to pull the trigger on doing that right now, but I do want everyone thinking about it. I talked to charity about the possibility of doing it, and I don't think it'll be a problem. But then that would, that would sever the last dependency for anyone running a meeting. Everything that they need will be in this room. It'll be managed through this room and will have the processes documented. So people will be able to run a meeting, record a meeting, and then I can come in after the fact and pick up the recordings and do what needs to be done. So that'll probably come up next month. I'll, I'll want to talk about that purchase. I formally requested quotes. Even though I have the notional prices, I'll bring the formal quotes in and we can discuss those in October. The maintenance garage, I was able to purchase the new phone systems and get those note initially set up. I hope those were able to be set up across the bays and you guys don't have to run all the way to the office anymore. Awesome. I've continued the, the weekly driving inspections of the township roads, cemeteries, and nuisance properties. I also attended the Montgomery County Township Association meeting, as well as the Ohio Residential Broadband Expansion Grant webinar. There's, there's a lot of information and money that's being made available, both at the state and federal levels for broadband expansion. So it's, it's good to be able to get those broader understandings, to be able to help residents understand where they need to go. And that is all that I had for this month.
Okay, mine is, I contacted Montgomery County Health Department again. I didn't receive a phone call back, but they, they were supposed to be out there this last week, and I have not received anything. I attended the DCA meeting. I will be attending a WRCG meeting to nominate a new trustee. Been in contact with both Brooklyn, New Lebanon Fire Department about setting up meeting town hall regarding the fire levy. At this time, they're not, this is, it's not possible with COVID. So if any residents have any questions, they are encouraged to contact either department chiefs or their city managers. And I don't know if you want to put that on, something like that on.
Sure, you send me the wording.
Okay. I've had a few residents ask about signs for our fire levy. As a township, we cannot supply these. So if there is anyone or a group that would like to purchase signs, that is up to them. And we, between the fire departments, they would be getting, they're putting together a fact sheet in, to give you the highlights on the fire levy. And then I'll get with you, Jason, and give that to you, too.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Have you spoken to either the fire departments and seen if they're getting any signs?
It's not their responsibility.
Sometimes they do, I'm hoping.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have all businesses discussion decision on web hosting provider?
Yes, so I've been going through the two bill or the two estimates for divided proposals. And I talked with iPanda today because I was trying to get them closer. There was gaps between the two, and I wanted to try to get them as close as I could to make them an equal evaluation across both proposals. So I was able to get that information. And right now, the iPanda services has a three-hundred-and-sixty-dollar hosting cost for the year with eight-hundred-and-forty dollars for monthly support, which covers everything from like general IT assistance, if we have a question about something with our PCs or the website work or uploading files, linking to different content, creating new content. That's all included there. And then eleven-hundred dollars for the website development. They also, we get six email accounts free of charge. Every email account after that is a seventy-two-dollar setup. And the total for that proposal was twenty-three-hundred dollars. Oasis charges two-hundred-and-forty dollars for the web hosting per year. There is no monthly support cost. The website, well, there is. I'll get into that later. The website development for them is fourteen-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. They have an initial vanity email setup, which is basically email hosting off our domain, a one-time thirty-five-dollar fee for the number of email accounts that we have. I think it's fifteen dollars per account, so that comes to two-hundred-and-ten dollars. General IT support and website support is seventy-five dollars an hour, a minimum of fifteen minutes. Email support is sixty dollars an hour with a minimum of fifteen minutes. Monthly social media support from Oasis is fifty dollars. And that brings their, their total cost to two-thousand-and-thirty dollars. Difference between the two is that iPanda has a support cost upfront, whether you use it or not. Oasis is more bill-as-you-go, right? With a minimum, like I said, of fifteen minutes for each type of their support. So that said, both are pretty straightforward. They both kind of have their lower prices for some things, higher prices for others are pretty even. The one difference was, is I think the IT support with Oasis is a little more comprehensive, because that's what they do. iPanda said that they could do more if we needed more, but they would have to hire people or bring people in to do that. Not that that would be a cost to us, but there may be latency, right? So Oasis is local. iPanda has a great presence through the Ohio Township Association. They do a number of cities, organizations, and townships. So as I was going through the two of these, I didn't really have a preference. I leaned a little bit more towards Oasis because they're local. And a lot of their cost is as you go, rather than playing, paying for something that you may not necessarily use. So at this time, after what, what I presented last month to the trustees and the fiscal officer, I'd like to know if you guys have any questions, comments, inputs?
What townships did Alana say that they did? I looked at a couple of them.
Her proposal, she had Penfelt, Penfield Township, Zane Township were the two examples that she. were the two examples that she gave. Um, which they were pretty straightforward, I mean, they weren't. I guess.
I looked at Zane Township.
Right.
Um, I, I didn't see anything that was like, holy crap, they're awesome.
Right.
Um, I liked Alana's presentation quite a bit, but I also liked either Oasis is local, it's pay as you need. And I think their support system seemed to be a little more.
Have, have you looked at the Clay Township website?
I had, not recently.
That's Oasis, uh, so is Jefferson.
I did look at Jefferson Township.
Yeah, so um you could tell the difference between those two. It, it's driven by what the township wants to put on it.
Yeah.
So yeah, Clay has got much more.
Clay's is very integrated.
It's integrated, it has pop-up notices that layer over the website, yeah. So um, that was the other thing that I, I really liked how Oasis had built some of their past business. The ones with IPanda, I understand they're not gonna sit there and propose a bunch of stuff if the township doesn't want a bunch of stuff. Um, but just seeing how Clay had it and how we've tried to put uh notifications at the top of the website, right? And then I kind of delete those as they expire, whatever else, the new meetings are up there. It really resonated with how they've done some of their development with their layering of windows on the uh website, so.
And the gentleman from Oasis, did I understand correctly that he lives here in the township?
He does, yeah, yeah. He came referred from a number of uh local townships as well as I think they've done some work with uh some education, educational organization.
I mean, I, I'm gonna say I lean towards Oasis.
Oh, I was also looking here, trustee Hartshorn, so the twenty-three hundred dollars, that's basically like the one month of monthly support. And then we would have that continuing each month, correct, eight hundred and forty dollars?
So the way that.
With IPanda?
So the monthly support for IPanda is seventy dollars a month. It costs eight hundred and forty for the year.
For the year, okay.
Right. Um, the same with the monthly hosting, their monthly hosting is thirty a month, three sixty for the year.
Okay.
Um, the website development for both companies was a flat rate that uh I think they both required half payment upfront if we selected them and then half payment after the website is developed with us contributing to reviews of the content and the website prior to the launch. So.
And we, we've got a service right here in our home. I think, you know, we, we, I, I don't know that we have an obligation, but I have a feeling, you know, we probably should. If, if it's a decision between the two and we don't have to pay extra money for services we're not going to use. And we've seen and we like his quality.
Hmm. What are your thoughts, trustee?
How much is uh Oasis a month?
For Oasis, their uh, their website development was fourteen ninety-five.
Okay.
Their email account cost is fifteen dollars per account and I think we've got like fourteen accounts.
Okay.
Some of those can be tightened up too. We can actually send, set up aliases that forward to personal emails.
Right.
But because right now our hosting provider, we have unlimited email accounts we can create. I just created them for like the BCA and for anything else we needed because it was easier.
Okay.
Um, then their cost for the web hosting itself is two hundred and forty dollars a year.
Okay. Which is less than IPanda.
It is. By about, uh, by a hundred and twenty dollars for the annual hosting. And part of that is, I, I, I'm not sure how IPanda hosts, but I know that Oasis hosts through Amazon. So it, it's, it's pay as you go, low rate.
Yeah.
Infrastructure, so. So did you have any other?
No, I'm good with Oasis, that was good to me.
Well, then that said, I, I will make a motion that we go with Oasis's proposal for reho, redeveloping and hosting the Perry Township web presence.
I will second.
Trustee Lynn?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, other old business, I already mentioned what's going on with retreat. Do you guys have any other old to revisit?
No.
Okay. Uh, new business?
So I believe if there, we only had one thing listed as new business for this evening.
Okay.
Um, and with that, we'll be going into an executive session.
Great, so at this time I will make a motion that in accordance with Ohio Revised Code one twenty-one point two-two, section G one, we will be going into executive session to discuss employment of a unemployment status of a township employee.
Second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Lynn?
Yep.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, at this time, I will make a motion that we leave our executive session and return to our regular meeting steps.
Second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Lynn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Okay, so based on our discussion, at this time, I would entertain a motion from one of my fellow trustees to offer to Ms. Karen Kaler a full-time position at a rate of fifteen dollars and fifty cents per hour, Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM. Um, if that works for you.
Effective October.
Effective October fourth. It'll start Monday, October fourth. Um, does that sound?
I accept.
Doable to you, okay?
I'll make that motion as red.
I'll second it.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Lynn?
Absolutely. Karen, thank you for everything you do.
Oh, I enjoy it, thank you.
That's well deserved. Um, any other new business at this time?
No.
Okay. Have any visitors that have brought anything?
Mr. Worble has. Could you please come up to the podium?
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, um, some requests have been made, if you would state your name.
Yeah, Brad Worble, live on Crawford, Tom's Own Road.
Thank you.
Twenty-four ninety-five. Um, any update on the state's forensic audit?
Um.
Missing file.
Miss Grill, you're in that meeting, they, they're still looking. We aren't gonna get much information from it until all said and done because it's a legal matter. Most of the information is being shared with Detective Waymire or Chief uh Littleton. But, I mean, there's not much that we've been updated on, you were participating in a meeting, did you come out with?
No, the only thing that they told us is basically until they present everything to whoever their supervisor is and their supervisor proceeds on, we won't be notified of anything.
Okay.
Yeah, this is going back a lot of years. So it, it's, they're digging into an awful lot of stuff.
All right, good, thanks for the update. Mr. Lewis had requested to speak.
Okay.
Uh, mine was for the police chief, so.
Okay.
Oh.
And those were the only two that signed in?
I got it. I'm sorry, I didn't sign. Uh, Dave, Sam, I can, I will be podium if you'd like. Got a letter some time back about the maintenance garage, had possibly the hazards of lead in there being exposed to that, and I believe you were even gonna have a meeting at one point in time about that, never heard any more about that. Got questions about my health, I spent time in that building, I ate in that building, I drank in that building. Is that something you're looking at?
We looked into it, I spoke with Montgomery County Soil and Water as well as the EPA and I spoke with the second foremost specialist on soil and water contamination in the eastern half of the United States. Uh, he works for Dow Chemical and we did some researching ourselves and there was really no threat to be founded to look into any further. Over the years, the dissipation rate was, um, I looked for my notes on all of it. The dissipation rate was safe enough that there shouldn't have been anybody affected by any toxins that were left. And at this point in time, um, they felt no reason to further any investigations into it.
Even though there might have been battery electrolytes, dump and things like that that wouldn't contaminate the water?
Well, testing, the problem with testing is the only thing that that would show up at this point in time would be a trace of sulfur and it's on sulfur spring, so it's gonna have a trace of sulfur even if it isn't. Um, there was not a belief that there was enough ever in the contamination, in the battery um waste or in the toxins. I can dig through my notes with the conversations with these folks, but um basically we had talked about what we would have ended up doing since they weren't willing to come out and investigate. They felt no threat to any of the land or soil um that we could pay for ourselves to go and buy, get a water test kit.
People that are in the building or have been in the building.
They did not feel that there was any threat that would have been with any of the people in the building because it was not necessarily a primary location for the batteries. So I, we could test the water and ground ourselves at the expense of the township. But if the authorities on that felt that there was, we talked about it, you know, briefly, but if, you know.
I had a child at a location that got quite ill. I mean, I don't think there was anything current or recent in that case either. We've had a couple of people that have worked in that building and have been ill or even have died.
And I did ask about that. I said, you know, we've had some people in the past that are, that have worked there that are ill and they said they did not believe that there would be a connection. If you, you know, would like to suggest that we look into it and that you don't wanna put.
Well, I think it's a serious matter of anybody that, of the past or the present. I mean, if, if.
We did too, and that's why we looked into it and it was unfounded.
Okay, well, I, I don't, I'm not an expert on it, I, I'm just asking, you know.
Yes, well, and that's why I contacted the experts because I don't know.
No idea, but you receive something like that and you think, okay, is this a serious matter? Is it, is it affecting my health and I don't even know it? I don't know.
Yeah, no, there, amongst the three agencies that I spoke with, the Montgomery County PA and the Soil and Water District.
I don't think soil and water would have much to do with that.
Well, I didn't know who to call and it was soil and it was water, so that was.
I served on that board for a number of years, so that's why I think I could speak that I don't think they would, I don't think they would be involved in something like that with lead contamination.
That's who the EPA suggested that we contact for local, um, but.
Okay.
You know, we researched as much as I could, which is how I found the gentleman from Dow Chemical that specializes in that because of what happened in Flint, Michigan with their water contamination. And I spoke with him personally and he said something of that should not be of any concern to anybody.
Okay. And Mr. Sam, I will ask you at the end of the meeting if you could just retroactively sign this?
Yes, I will, I'll, I, I just noticed to do it when I walked in the door.
Not a problem. All right, those were the only, those literally are the only visitors we have. Um, so with that said, I'll make a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Lynn?
Yes, eight oh seven, eight.
Okay, thank you, everybody.